I would like to call to order the municipality of Monroeville's Citizens Night for September 7th, 2017. Mayor Arasinko is out of town and was unable to make it back in time, so I'll be running the meeting this evening. However, he wants everybody to know that he will be back here on Tuesday for our regular council meeting, so we'll get the meeting started here. I'm going to ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
............................................................ Before we get into our Citizens Night, our time for remarks and comments, we're going to lay some meeting rules down that we are able to via ordinance. We're going to have a five-minute speaking rule, and what we're going to do is... Thank you, Mr. Little.
Everyone's going to have five minutes for your comment period. I'm going to ask council and staff to allow the individual to speak and ask any questions they want, but to not take up that person's five minutes. So the person can speak for five minutes. At the end of their five minutes, then, we can respond. We can answer questions. I feel that five minutes is an adequate amount of time for someone to get their point across, but if anyone feels that their questions weren't answered, I'll stay afterwards after the meeting and answer any questions they have. Keep in mind it being Citizens Night for our agenda-setting meeting. Our regular council meeting is on Tuesday. You will have another opportunity to address council as well for the same issues on Tuesday as well. So we're just trying to have an efficient meeting, and I feel that five minutes is an adequate amount of time for citizens to comment. So we'll start Citizens Night. I'm going to go by the list here. Mark Kozar?
I'm actually here on behalf of Sheets, so whenever you guys want me to.
Yeah, Mark, yeah, I'm sorry about that, yep.
Whenever you guys want me to.
Sure, we'll get to you in a few moments. Thank you. Nicole Henline?
Thank you. Well, that's good, Nicole.
Hello. Thank you. I just wanted to take a few moments.
Nicole, state your name.
I'm sorry. I'm Nicole Henline, Director of the Monroeville Public Library and resident of Monroeville. And I just wanted to let you know some of the things that are going on this month. Last year, for the first time, September was Love Your Library Month in Allegheny County, and the Buncher Foundation matched any donations during September. They're doing that again this September, so there are several ways to support the library in September and make your money stretch even further. We have September 1st through 30th, Dad's Pub and Grub is donating to the library 10% of the bill if you give them the little flyer that's either on the newsletter, picked up at the library, printed offline. If you give that to them, 10% of the bill for the entire month of September goes to the library. The Friends of the Library are hosting a trivia night on September 23rd, and this is their third one, and they have all been great fun, and we certainly invite you to join us for another one. And again, all of those donations, all of that fundraising from that night will be matched as part of that. There's a fundraiser at Panda Express on September 21st, and they actually give 20% of the bill to the library. And of course, you can make direct donations in person or online. Last September was wonderful. We raised over $17,000 in the month of September to go towards the elevator fund, which we were able to raise what we needed for the match, and we were able to get the grant, so we're working on making that actually happen. So hopefully, we'll have an elevator sometime before the end of 2018. In this case, we are raising the money for the Build the Backyard campaign, which is new, and a project that we started with Rotary when they wanted to build us a pavilion. And so we're trying to create a programming space in the area behind the library. And so that's where that money will go. We're also in the process of creating a strategic plan, and we're first doing a needs assessment to make sure that our plans for a sustainable future line up with the needs of the community. We invite everyone on council, everyone in the community, to please take the survey. It's on the library website, and it was live as of 5:00. So please do take a moment... Or 5:00. To take the survey. It will take about 5:00 minutes. Everyone who participates is eligible for a chance to win gift cards from local businesses. So please do take a few minutes to do that. And my time is done, but I have...
Not get off that easy, though.
Oh, okay.
So, just share with everybody. I don't think a lot of people understand how, what a central piece our library is to our community. So, last month, you had 16,000 guests to the library.
Yes.
16,049, to be exact. I know you're a librarian, and like, think specific. And what was your circulation for August? 23,000?
That sounds about right.
And can you explain to them what circulation means?
Circulation means the items that have been lent to people who have come into the library.
So...
Or online. Any of the online resources as well.
So in the month of July, they lent 31,120 items. Had 16,049 people come through the door. And they fundraised for most of this money and get grants for most of this money. I really needed to point that out, because a lot of people that don't go to the library don't understand how central this is to so many people in our community.
Thank you. And with the survey, we really... You know, people, if they say, "I don't go to the library," we really want them to take the survey. We want to know why don't they? What are they looking for? Or maybe we're providing something that they don't realize we have, and so we want to communicate that better, because we do want to offer what the community is looking for. And the numbers have been very nice lately, because circulation has been going up, door traffic has been going up, programming has been going up. I have a wonderful staff. We've gotten a lot of grants and done a lot of fundraising to be able to do some fun things this year.
Last question. How many people showed up for the eclipse?
Oh. There were over 400 people at the eclipse party.
Wow.
And that was fun. We will be better prepared in seven years.
Great.
We're going to start buying the glasses now.
Today.
One of my wonderful staff members is here to talk to you about a special event that's coming up in October. So thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Nicole.
Thanks, Nicole.
Alice?
Hi. I'm Alice Raffigan, and the library is very, very excited to present our first Library Fun Fest. It's going to be a wonderful community event, and that'll take place on Saturday, October 14th, from noon until 4:00. The excitement is going to be the fact that we have drawn everything from food trucks. We'll have inflatable rides. There'll be face painting. The Carnegie Science Center will also be doing two events for us. There'll be pumpkin painting. We'll have booths. We'll have DJs, basket raffles, and we do have sponsors for that. The sweetest part of it, and the reason that I'm here, is because we have a Cupcake Classic. There's a judging of cupcakes. It'll be divided into three age categories, and there'll be 12 contestants in each of those categories. What we are hoping is that some of the council members will act as judges. There we go. Okay. So, think about it. Dessert will be yours. You will have 12 cupcakes that you're going to be able to judge.
Well, do you know we have a junior bake master?
Yes.
In Monroeville.
Right here in Monroeville, yeah.
That's correct. Yes.
He was on a TV show.
Yeah, he was on a TV show.
He was on a TV show. He placed very high on that. Yes. And we're hoping to find another one at the Cupcake Classic. So we hope that everybody will, at the very least, come, enjoy the Fun Fest, and we hope to see you as judges. If you can judge, you can just contact Nicole at the library, and we'll help you with that.
Did you mention that they need to register by September 28th?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Because we want to make sure that... We need a certain amount. We want it to be a good time for both the contestants and the judges, so that we know ahead of time that we've met that goal and not had to exceed it. But yes, registration is important. They will bake ahead of time, but they'll bring the frosting and the decorations to the... And that's going to be the part that we'll be able to see them do it and then judge accordingly. Okay.
Is this something we can put on our website? Something we can put on our site?
Sure.
Thanks.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Alice.
Yeah, just as a note to add to that, Nicole mentioned that the library is doing a strategic plan, and I don't know, I forget the date, Nicole, but I will be interviewing on TV-15 in about two weeks.
Two Tuesdays from now.
Yeah, two Tuesdays, exactly. Two Tuesdays from, I think, this past Tuesday. I think it might be the 19th.
I want to say it's the 19th.
I think it's the 19th. Nicole Henline, obviously, she's the Director of the Library, and Debbie Izok, who's the Chairperson of the library. Just to let the public know what their strategic planning entails, and also some of the stuff that Councilman Caleri was just talking about, the importance of the library to the community. So that'll be on the 19th.
Very good. Jay Wright?
Hi. I'm Jay Wright, council. I'd like a question for Mr. Ratcher first. Attorney Ratcher, sorry about that.
Mr.'s fine.
Mr.'s fine, okay. I have a question. If they make a change, add something to the ordinance they're considering for seismic testing, do they have to wait a month to vote on it?
No.
Okay, so you could make a change tonight?
Correct.
Okay. Because I would urge council to add a provision that there is fracking only in industrial-zoned areas, and that would protect Monroeville residents.
Jay, that's beyond the scope of this ordinance, though.
You can't do that?
This is strictly an ordinance regarding seismic testing.
Okay.
We did say at the last meeting, and we are going to be proposing a new ordinance related to drilling.
How soon, sir?
Gas recovery.
How soon, roughly?
I think council wants to see something next month.
Okay, because the only reason I'm asking, once someone applies to the DEP for a permit, you're out of it. You're done with it.
Well, not until they apply here for a permit.
Yep, well, but once they apply, you're done.
Your points won't take.
Okay. Second question. Did we ever find out who owns the mineral rights to the park? To the parks?
No, we did not.
Well, my question... I guess I'm a little confused, Mr. Ratcher, Attorney Ratcher. We've been getting royalties for... Since 2004, I believe. Or about 2005, I'm sorry. My mistake. 2005, when a previous council enacted an ordinance. So we have to own the rights, or we wouldn't get royalties.
Well, we... Let me put it this way. Those are shallow wells. We know we own those rights.
Okay, so can seismic testing come in from outside the park and go under the park and take the gas from it?
That's not...
No, the gas cannot be recovered by seismic testing.
Well, no, I'm at fracking. If they set up a well somewhere in another borough next to us, because they can do, what, two miles, guys?
Three.
Roughly two miles, three miles? Can they come in and take the gas underneath our parks?
There's a scenario where that would be possible, yes.
How do we guard against it? Since a park is... That park is, especially from across from me, is supposed to be used for the public use of Monroeville residents for 50 years. It's in the contract when you bought the land with the Bohenskes. So there's got to be something we can do to stop that.
It's very difficult. If the gas companies can obtain the rights for that gas, it's very difficult to stop them from coming from another municipality a couple of miles underground and taking the gas.
But don't we own the rights to the gas?
Well, I don't know if we do or not. We know we own the shallow rights. We may well own the other rights.
Okay.
I don't know if Bohenske's owned them. That's the problem here.
Well, according to the contract, he sold all rights to you guys.
All the rights that he had.
All the rights that he had.
Yeah, so in other words, if I'm going to sell my house to you, I would put in the contract that I'll sell you all the rights I have. If I don't have some rights to begin with, you don't get them. I can only give you what I have.
How would we find out who has the rights?
Well, we'd have to do a mineral search, title search, on the property.
Because they've probably done it already. You guys were down at the courthouse in Pittsburgh for three months, or someone was, for three months checking deeds and mineral rights. So we've got to find out who owns it, because it's very important to us.
Counsel? Your point's taken, Jay.
Okay. I just wanted to ask...
Thank you.
Bring it up. Thank you very much.
Very good. Chad Steubenbort?
Chad Steubenbort, resident of Monroeville. First, I just want to take 30 seconds and tell everyone about an event coming up at Gateway September 18th. It will start at 6:30. It's an event that's going to be held sponsored by both Forbes Regional Hospital and the Pennsylvania State Police involving information about human trafficking. That portion will be done by Forbes Hospital, so I want to thank Mark Rubino over the...
At the high school?
At the high school auditorium, correct. So again, September 18th, 6:30. For the first hour, we'll be going over human trafficking, and then for the next hour, the Pennsylvania State Police will be offering parents and teachers advice on internet safety and social media safety for their children.
In the auditorium?
Yep, in the auditorium. It is not recommended for children to attend, because there is sensitive material in the human trafficking portion. Because of that, we are going to offer free babysitting, so if you can't come unless you have your child... Tracy Ricardi, one of the home ec. teachers, has stepped up to the plate along with local Girl Scout troops, who will offer free babysitting in the dance studio adjacent to the auditorium. So I wanted to invite all of council and everyone in the public to that as well. Next thing I wanted to discuss was the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, says prepared by Josephine Rock, who's not here this evening. I just kind of wanted to go through the goals quickly and ask a few questions. So, Goal Number One was develop and diversify the business structure with objectives to expand the commercial-professional service tax base. Example, information, technology, finance, insurance, healthcare services, to build strong relationships with economic strategy. With that being said, just recently today, through one of my contacts, I received from Seattle, actually, there's an RFP that just went out from Amazon. They're actually building a second headquarters, and you only have a month to submit. It has to be in by October 19th. But I am urging council to definitely consider and really urging you guys to apply. It says it can bring 50,000, 50,000, full-time employees with an average annual salary exceeding $100,000. I went through all of the site requirements, and we do meet all of the site requirements. So 30 miles within a population hub of 1 million people, or within 1 million of Pittsburgh, within 45 miles of the airport, we meet that requirement, not more than two miles away from major highways. Well, we obviously meet that as well. Initial square footage of 500,000. We have two very large commercial properties available right now in Monroeville. So I will give this to you, Mr. Little, and if council is at all interested of it.
Love to see us try to compete for that. I'm sure county council would also be willing to help with that, obviously, any type of...
The county supplying as well. I saw that as well.
Yeah, and there's...
I don't know that they're going to help us.
Well, anywhere in the county, they're making tax revenue off of it. So I would strongly urge us to look at considering that. The other one that I just wanted to touch on briefly, well, Goal Four, so there's only five goals. Goal Four is the Joint Comprehensive Plan. I do want to, again, applaud you guys for taking part of that. I know that was through a grant, so that is a good initiative. The last one, Goal Five, it says, "Continue to evaluate the municipal separate storm sewer system program as it relates to the implementation of a flat fee for all property owners to repair an aging storm sewer systems infrastructure." So my question I have is, I know I've been up here, I believe, on two or three occasions asking about the fee, and I know it's been placed on the back burner. We haven't discussed it in a while. If I'm not mistaken, Josephine started on April 10th, correct? So, five short months ago. She authored this, and one of the five goals is implementation of the flat fee. So someone's lying. I'm not going to point any fingers. I just would like to really ask where we are at with this, right? So a year ago, almost to the date, the school district received a letter as one of the 20 largest participants and said, "Okay, if we go through with this, the proposal is you owe $74,000, right? The mall owes $175,000." In total, the municipality would pay about 2.5, or collect $2.5 million by way of fee or tax. It came up in the newspaper following that. The MS4 plan was posted online with a 30-day window available. Mr. Little, you again were quoted in a newspaper article more recently, I believe, last week regarding the MS4 and the cost of that to multiple municipalities. It wasn't just specific to Monroeville. And now, just last week, again, on you guys' website, it says, "Goal Five, to have this fee." The next paragraph down says, "Major Initiatives", and it says, "The Municipal Code," which you guys are looking at, and then the next one's, "Analyzing the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Program and Evaluating How to Pay for a Five-Year Capital Improvement Program." Program." So with that, I would just like to ask, where are we at with it? I mean, it's obviously not on the back burner if it's continually coming up. So are we continually evaluating that? Are we going to evaluate that after November? When are we going to discuss that?
Is that all the comments you have?
It's all the comments I have.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Little, Mr. Hugas, could you explain to the public two things we're talking about? We're talking about the pollution reduction plan, MS4 Pollution Reduction Plan, which is required, and we're doing through the DEP in order to maintain our permit application annually. That's what the 30-day window of comment period is for. Jamie Story was up here two months ago, presenting our MS4 plan, which is unrelated to any sort of fee or funding of that plan, but it's an annual thing that we have to do in order to stay compliant.
Correct.
That's correct. And when is the deadline for...
The MS4 application has to be submitted by next Friday. The Pollution Reduction Plan has to be submitted with that application to the DEP.
Okay.
That was the premise of the hearing, or, I'm sorry, the meeting last month.
All right. But just so the public is aware, the window that's being referred to, as far as the comment period, that is only on that permit application that we keep talking about. It has nothing to do with any kind of funding or fee. If, in fact, this Counsel or any Counsel decides to enact any kind of fee or structure to pay for these things, it would go through the, you know, public scrutiny as every other ordinance does. It would have to be done by ordinance. We'd be advertising it. We'd be discussing it like we discuss every other piece of business in Monroeville. But those are two separate, two separate things. The, you know, as far as costs, they can be reduced through, you know, partnerships, sponsorships, grants. The staff is still exploring these things, but as far as any kind of fees, fee involved with this, there's nothing that's on our, on our agenda at this point.
Respectfully, if I may.
Mr. Little, do you have anything else to comment?
No, you said it all. I could not have said it better. I mean, they're, they're kind of two separate things with respect to the MPDS permit and the fee. The application has to, has to go in, as Mr. Hugas said, by next Friday, but the fee issue is separate, and as Chad, as you, as you quoted, it's, it's on the back burner.
On Goal Five, it has them in one section. Is that a misprint?
Well, we're sticking to our five-minute comment period. If anyone else would like to address Counsel?
Chad, if you want to, if you want to talk to me after the meeting, you're more than welcome to, okay?
Okay.
Likewise, Chad. I mean, and certainly too, we're trying to stick to a five-minute comment period for everybody, but certainly if someone feels that their questions aren't fully answered, we'd be happy to stick around afterwards to answer those questions. And once again, you have another opportunity next Tuesday at the Counsel meeting. If it's an agenda, if it's on the agenda, you can comment on it prior to us voting. However, at the end of the meeting, you also have an opportunity to speak about any municipal issue whatsoever on the Tuesday meeting, so. Alyssa Beck, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'll reserve my comments regarding the seismic testing ordinance for the public comment at the end of the, of the agenda-setting meeting.
Well, if you're going to comment about the ordinance this evening, now would be your time to do it, but you would have another opportunity on Tuesday to comment before we vote on it. We, this is our agenda-setting meeting. We are not taking any official action on this, any ordinance is. We don't vote this evening, but you can certainly talk about the ordinance now.
I'm just looking at the agenda here, and it says, "Citizens' Remarks and Comments."
That's where we are right now in the meeting.
And then just below that, it says, "September 7th, after Citizens' Night Roll Call," and then, "Public Comment on Proposed Agenda Items Only."
That is, we are setting the agenda for...
That's for Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Which, and the seismic testing ordinance is on the agenda.
Correct.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just do this in five minutes.
Well, now's your time, now's your time to do it, and, and then you certainly have another opportunity on Tuesday, but there will not be another time period tonight for you to speak.
Okay.
You need to state your name first.
My name is Alyssa Beck, and I live in Monroeville, Pennsylvania. I wanted to invite everybody to the Sustainable Monroeville Meeting this coming Monday evening. We're showing an amazing film. It's called Inhabit: A Permaculture Perspective. It is fantastic. It's uplifting. It's hopefully where Monroeville will be moving in the future. Talking about an economy that's aligned with permaculture would be an economy in which the best business decision is the same as the best ecological decision, and it's just a really great movie. Moving on to the agenda that I see that's set here, I would ask that the motion be to approve or deny Addendum Permit ISO 61317 be placed after the vote on the ordinance, unless, of course, this will be in compliance with the ordinance that we, we hope passes. It seems that the direction or order is reversed, in my view. Thank you all for your work on the seismic survey ordinance considered. While there are some minor differences between this proposed ordinance and the ones enacted in South Fayette and Oakmont, we think they provide a fair measure of protection and notice of this activity to the people and property of Monroeville. So really, thank you. There are some typos in the legislation. Some of the section numbers are off, and one section, Section 6, notification is a bit muddled. It looks like some copying and pasting was done there that wasn't quite clear, and it's a bit confusing. It just needs a good proofreading and amended before the final vote. Thank you again for taking this matter seriously and responding with the introduction of this legislation. At the August 8th meeting, we were pleased to hear that our solicitors have the belief that Monroeville's zoning code also needs to be updated. As it is now, fracking is permitted as a conditional use in all zoning districts in our municipality. To permit any industrial use such as drilling and fracking in all non-industrial districts, no matter the conditions imposed, defeats the purposes of the underlying use, such as residential, retail, commercial, and so on. One could argue that the present code is illegal, and in that it allows for incompatible uses in a specific zoning district. Drilling does not belong in residentially-zoned areas like my street or Garden City Drive. It doesn't belong in our retail shopping districts either. It is an industrial use, and like all industrial uses, it should be restricted only to industrial zones and only as a conditional use in an industrial zone. I submit to you two zoning ordinances for your consideration. One is from South Fayette, and the other is from Wilkins. Both are distinguished, as they treat the use in a very comprehensive way. They're protective of us, the citizens of Monroeville, Pennsylvania. As the Counsel begins to address this fault in our zoning code, I ask that you initiate a public involvement program in Monroeville. If the Counsel does draft a new zoning ordinance, it is important that when it is time for citizens to comment on any draft ordinance, they have the opportunity to better understand what they are commenting on. This Counsel represents all of us. Thank you. It is up to an informed electorate to govern ourselves. The more we, the people, are involved in the construction of our laws, the better off we all will be. That is what our democracy is all about. I would like to take, have the opportunity to meet all of you, to discuss how we can best educate citizens as to the issues, and to invite them into their lawmaking process. So thank you.
Thank you.
Alyssa, where is the sustainable, is it still at the library?
Yeah, it's, oh, yeah. So Monday evening, 6 o'clock, we're doing a whole-food, plant-based potluck dinner. If you don't want to bring food, or you cannot bring food, just come anyway. There will be food for you to eat, and the food will be organic, preferably, if you bring something. And that's at 6 o'clock. And then at 7 o'clock is the movie, and again, it's called Inhabit. And I saw it the other night at a community event in the city, and it's just, it's beautiful, it's uplifting, it's light, and it's, it's our future, which is really now, if we decide to take advantage of it. So thanks.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
There is, no other names signed in? If anyone would like to address Counsel?
We have a couple more.
Please state your name for the record, please, sir.
Good evening, my name is Robert Seraphini. I am a resident of Monroeville. I have two short questions here tonight. Two months ago, I brought up about a convicts mirror being put on Northern Pike going out of Maria. I found out tonight from Mr. Hugas that the state doesn't have any involvement in that. What can we do about that as a municipality? Can we get one up?
That's a good question. We can look into it, absolutely.
Well...
Can public, can we just put one up?
Not on a state road.
Not on, not on Northern Pike.
Northern Pike is a state road.
So how do we go about proceeding to do something like that?
Not on a state road. It's very clear.
We cannot, you cannot put a mirror at all in a state. You can't even ask about it.
Correct. We have a directive from Penn Doc.
Is there anyone we can talk to, or anyone I can talk to?
Talk to the Governor, I guess, but...
Joe Marcosik.
You state, you're, Joe Marcosik, your state representative.
Okay, I'll talk to him about that, then. Okay, my other question was, last month, I had asked Mr. Ratcher and Mr. Mangini to get together and talk, and maybe iron something out if something had to be signed or something. I wanted to know if anything of that sort was done.
I don't believe so.
No.
Can I ask why, sir? I mean, if we're still talking about this issue, and we're going to vote on it, shouldn't something be more concrete between the two parties?
Well, we can only address our ordinances and rules and regulations. We certainly can't, you know, force Mr. Mangini to...
I'm not saying force, but I, you know, here's a learned man right here that you have sitting right next to you, and Mr. Mangini is the President. Surely, you put those two heads together, I'm sure you, sometimes you get a better solution than you can with a bunch of people yelling in their back. And I was hoping maybe something like that could happen.
Your point's well taken, and we'll, we'll get through this ordinance for the seismic testing, and then we'll take it step by step.
I figure with two intelligent men, sometimes it works a lot better than having a lot of people telling you what to do.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd first like to hand in just some signatures.
Georgiana, do you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Georgiana Woodhall, 4560 Broadway Boulevard. I'm a little disappointed, because I had questions that I wanted to ask Mr. Mangini. Will he be here on Tuesday for the meeting?
I have no idea. Mr. Burke is here. You might want to ask him.
Well, Mr. Burke is not Mr. Mangini, but thank you.
Better looking.
That's questionable. What I did want to say is, you know, it was mentioned that you were concerned about a challenge with this ordinance, and Mr. Mangini did make comment in the paper of, you know, a possible challenge. And I hope that you don't hold back for that reason. I see on here that there's a motion to approve or deny Addendum Permit IS 06137 for the use of municipality of Monroeville roads to fibrosis and place receivers within certain road right-of-way. I think Pennsylvania law is very clear when it comes to public roads and use of public roads, and that's for vehicular traffic. These individuals are coming in here asking for special privilege, which they're not entitled to. And, you know, the manner in which they, they've gone about this, they've got their permits, they've got, you know, contracts with some property owners, this is nothing new. In my opinion, they put the cart before the horse, and I hope you don't hold back. We need this ordinance, and we need a strict ordinance. Your job is to protect the residents of Monroeville. As I said, I had a lot of questions from Mr. Mangini, but, I'm sorry, what is the attorney's name that's sitting behind us for geo...
Burke.
Oh, Burke, Mr. Burke.
Mr. Burke, okay. I would ask the members of Counsel, between now and Tuesday, I'd like you to go online and Google "Centertownship GeoKinetics versus Centertownship and the Centertownship Board of Supervisors." And while Mr. Burke is here, maybe he can stand up and explain to the residents of Monroeville and the people here what that was about. And I think if you read that, you're not going to worry about a challenge. So I'm going to end it here, and, but before I do, I just want to mention something. I was looking through the Times Express on August 3rd, and there was in the, since this is transaction, this is public information, you know, caught my eye. It said, "Donna Lee Stowe Estate Sold Property at 2460 Tilburg Road to Blueberry Acres LLC, So I looked it up. There's about 32 acres there. And I'm kind of familiar with that property, the way it's laid out, only because, you know, they put a Verizon tower up there. What I'd like to know is, do you know who is involved with Blueberry Acres? Anybody on Counsel? Okay, well, I drove by there, and I saw that same orange fluorescent paint painted on the road there, just in the same manner that it was, was in front of my home, right before the seismic testing. So I'd like to ask Mr. Little or someone to find out why that orange paint, that same fluorescent orange paint, is sprayed there, and is it there for seismic testing purposes?
I'll look into it.
If you give your contact information to Mr. Little, he can get back to you on that.
Sure. Anything you have, George, I'll give to me.
But in the meantime, like I said, I urge you to look up Centertownship, Centertownship Board of Supervisors, you know, GeoKinetics versus that. And while Mr. Burke is here, I'd like to ask him, as I said, if he could stand up and explain to the residents of Monroeville what that was all about. Bring on the challenge, is my, is my opinion.
Agreed comments. There is no one else signed in, so we're going to close that portion of our meeting and move over to our agenda-setting meeting. There is an executive session announcement. The Counsel conducted an executive session for personnel and litigation reasons prior to Citizens' Night, beginning at 6:40 PM until 7:00 PM. Counsel, legislative action, if any, shall be taken at the September 12, 2017 Counsel meeting. We're going to move over to our minutes.
You didn't go to be here.
Citizens' Night, meeting of August 3rd, Counsel Work Session of August 3rd, and the regular Counsel meeting of August 8th. Is there any additions or changes, Counsel?
I have one. Yeah, I just noticed, speaking of actagon, Jay, you mentioned actagon. It's in the minutes, it says octagon. It should be with an A. Okay, just, I don't, I don't know what version that was in, but that, that's the way you spell it.
You don't know if it's in the work session?
Yeah, I don't know which one, I don't know which, but I happen to know, I forget which one it's in, Sharon. Maybe, it might be in all three of them.
Any other changes or corrections, Counsel?
No.
Moving over to our approval reports of tax collections. Any questions, Counsel? Seeing none? List of bills and budget transfers. We'll start Mr. Wilson. Any questions this evening?
No, thank you.
Mr.?
Duncan.
Duncan, please.
Mr. Caleri?
No, sir.
Mr. Johns?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Harvey?
Nothing, sir.
And Mrs. Gatos?
No, sir.
Okay, and I have no questions either. Any questions about payroll, Counsel?
No, sir.
No.
Okay. And we're going to move over to our consent agenda. We'll start with our new business for Mr. Little.
Okay, item number one is 17-8 SUV A&amp;L Motors, and my understanding is, is there is a letter here that they would like to table that?
Yes.
Is that correct, Paul? That's for, that would be for number one, which is the preliminary and final subdivision, and number two would be the site plan approval.
Yes.
I just saw the letter. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we will bypass that. And the, number three is the 17-10ST, The Healing Center. Applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct a 7,022-square-foot retail building and associated site amenities. The applicant also submitted for exterior wall surface alternative request, application for the installation of split-faced block on portions of the exterior of the proposed building. The property is located at 130 Mall Circle Drive in the C2 Business Commercial District. Paul Wildin, I'd ask you to explain about the split block and the whole project itself.
All right. The project is fairly small, it's right in front of the Monroeville Mall. This would be like the Expo Mart where you drive under. There's a little triangular piece of property, it used to be called the Vault, it was a jewelry store. That building is proposed to be torn down, razed, and a new building constructed. We've reviewed the plans for stormwater and zoning, and so far everything is up to code. They have appropriate amount of parking, handicap spaces, and adequate stormwater facilities. The alternative request that they were asking for, for the wall surface, this is one of the samples that they supplied, it will be the size of a concrete block, but instead of being rough, it's called ground faced, so it's a little bit smoother, a little bit different. And they also supplied some photographs of where it, where it, where it has been used, and they have a brochure from the manufacturer, and an additional little sample packet, and it has some different colors. And I'll just pass this down the, down to the numbers.
Is this because it's their standard look, this is how their buildings are designed and put up everywhere they put one?
I don't know that they've built any yet, but that is what they want, yeah, they want them all to be consistent. So this is why they're asking for the, the alternative request.
Hey, Paul, one question. Didn't we visit this split face block issue years ago?
It's, it, it comes up from time to time, see, the zoning ordinance says.
It's a form we passed, an ordinance where we.
We've talked about it in some roundabout ways of changing that requirement.
So we've never changed?
No, it's still in place.
So what's?
It's a modification to the zoning ordinance.
Understand that, why?
This is more updated.
Why, is it because it's new, it's like a newer product, or?
To be quite honest with you, it's, it's a structural member, it makes construction go a lot faster. Traditionally, you have to put up like a concrete block and then a brick face over top of it, so there's more labor involved with that type of construction, where this is one, one time. You put up, you eliminate a step, eliminate labor cost, it's a faster product.
It actually is good looking. I mean, I've seen.
If you get, if you get the right product, it is.
And it's not going to be the entire building?
No, right, structurally, it's the same as before.
So, Mr. Hugus, so as this, as these new materials come out, and they're updated, and they actually look better, is this something we should visit in changing our zoning ordinance? Or something we should just see, see as they come in and approve it that way?
Everybody has a different opinion on their aesthetics. I mean, I, a lot of places here, you'll see they have jumbo, we call jumbo brick. It's a target, and Johnny were a perfect example, they have jumbo brick, but they have an accent strip with the jumper, with the split face block, and you can see it's a much larger unit. Some people think it looks industrialized because you have a block, a big concrete block, it's a concrete masonry unit. So I think it depends on what your preference is.
I personally think that one.
You know, this, the product they're showing here is not like a standard concrete block that you would go to Lowe's and pick up. It's, it has a specific exterior to it. Maybe if you want to address it in the zoning ordinance, you add some language about how the finish of it is going to be, where, you know, it's not going to be, go to Lowe's and get a concrete block.
That's not going to be the color, it's going to be the color, or whatever.
Yeah, it's good looking, I think it looks nice, yeah.
I believe it's the larger sample is what they intended to use.
The pearl?
Uh, yes.
The color that they have on their hand?
Yes.
Versus the look of the picture?
Oh, is there any reason why we wouldn't want to allow this?
It's, it's personal preference, to be quite honest with you.
I think it's good looking, it matters.
Is there, is there a, is there a building that has this kind of block on it right now, anywhere, on Monroeville?
The Monroeville Assembly of God Church on William Penn Highway.
What?
Has split face block.
Well, yeah, split face, but this isn't like, this is.
This type of material, no.
Yeah, this is different, it's split face.
And it's not going to be the entire building. The, the lowest course on the building is going to be like a stone facing.
Move that down a little bit, Paul, yeah, so.
We got it.
Jesus.
And then the middle section of the building.
What you're pointing to is off the screen.
Yeah, we can't.
Yeah, you're off the screen, you're off the screen, there you, there you go. All right.
Okay, the bottom course is going to be a stone facing, the middle course is going to be the ground face block, and then there's some sort of decorative metal panels for the top.
A quick question, when they demolish the building that's there and they're going to rebuild, what, are they going to do anything with the basement of the existing block?
I think it's going to be filled in, I think this is proposed to be slab on grade, so I don't think there's going to be anything below.
Okay, there's not going to be anything below grade anymore?
I don't think so.
The applicant will be here Tuesday with a full-size rendering to make it a little bit easier.
A lot of people don't know that there's a basement in that building, so I didn't know what they were planning on doing with it.
I think it looks good.
Oh, I think that looks good.
And we can use a little modernization around here.
So what would we do, would we change the ordinance?
Yes.
Come Tuesday?
No, just for this project.
Hmm?
This, this request is just.
According to the ordinance, this, the ordinance is 30 years old, or at some point in time.
Yes.
That's, that's what I kind of meant, JJ, yeah, you're right.
They're amended.
Any other questions for Paul, council?
No.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, sir.
Too heavy.
Paul, I had a question, couldn't the developer couldn't make it tonight?
They asked the third, I think he contacted.
I'm not sure. We notified them and asked them to bring a colored rendering for the meeting, so.
Oh, forget it then, he's not getting it. No, you know, it's just kind of an informal meeting like this.
And I'd like to know the color of the block they're going to use.
Okay, there may have been some confusion, maybe he, the person I spoke with is only, thought they only had to come to next week's meeting.
But they are invited, and they're planning on coming for the Tuesday meeting.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Moving over to motions.
Okay, the first motion, a motion to approve, deny addendum permit IS-61317 for the use of municipality of Monroeville roads to vibrosis and place receivers within certain road right-of-ways. This will be on the agenda, and this was brought up by several people at the podium. Just as an explanation, last month, council denied the use of, of property in the municipality with respect to the seismic testing that has occupied the last two meetings here in Monroeville. This is, there was an addendum to that permit, and last month was just for the lands, this is for the roads, okay, just so everybody understands that.
Jim, will this apply to the ordinance that we're considering?
Correct, it's, it's kind of tied together.
Okay, ties it in, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Moving over to resolutions.
Okay, now, first resolution is exactly what we have been talking about, a resolution approving a split face concrete masonry unit as an approved exterior surface material as provided for in section 209.3 of ordinance 1443 as amended for the Healing Center Site Plan Number 17-10-ST located at 130 Mall Circle Drive. So that would be the modification, that would be to the subdivision land development, wouldn't it, Paul? Or the?
Well, this is, it's a resolution because it's a separate application for the split face block exclusion.
Okay. Okay, resolution number two is a resolution adopting the Forbes, Forbes Hospital perioperative, if I spelled that.
Perioperative.
Perioperative, perioperative, okay. Services Sewage Planning Module. Number three is a resolution adopting the BMMI Elmhurst Sewage Planning Module, which we approved, I believe it was, that was about two months ago, I believe.
What's the Forbes Hospital on? Where is that Forbes Hospital?
Mr. Hugus?
They came through about two months ago to do an infill project for their perioperative surgery services.
Oh, okay, around the back?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Sewage modules are based off of water consumption.
Okay.
And when they went through this process, they just, they decided that they increase their, their water consumption, which means they have to do with planning.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, was that same thing that we had talked about?
Yes, same thing, this goes hand in hand.
Thank you.
And it's sewage, not stormwater, to be clear with everybody.
Yeah.
Nothing to do with detention ponds?
No.
Very good.
Okay, resolution number four is a resolution under Act 205 of 1984 known as the Municipal Pension Plan Funding Standard Recovery Act authorizing the 2018 Minimum Municipal Obligation, otherwise known as the MMO, for the police and non-uniform pension plans, and that's in your packet, council, for what will be required for payment in the latter part of Item number five is a resolution approving the transfer of restaurant liquor license number R-6999 into the municipality of Monroeville to Sheets Incorporated located at 4723 William Penn Highway Elliott Road. This is a public hearing, and I believe Mr. Kozar, that is why you are here, and it's a public hearing, if, turn it over to Mr. Ratcher, if, usually Mr. Slicitzer handles the public hearings.
Okay, this is the consideration of the resolution for the transfer of a restaurant liquor license, number R-6999 in the municipality of Monroeville, Sheets Incorporated, located at 4723 William Penn Highway slash Elliott Road. Sir, would you identify yourself, please?
I would be happy to do that. My name is Mark Kozar, I am with the law firm of Flaherty and O'Hara, and I'm actually a former resident of Monroeville, I lived off of Elliott Drive on Illini Drive for a long time. Of course, they built the Sheets here after I moved. I'm here to request that Monroeville approve a resolution permitting the intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license from outside the municipality to within in pursuit to revise liquor code Title 47, Section 461B3 for use at the Sheets store at 4723 William Penn Highway. As you all probably know, the liquor code permits the PLCB to approve the transfer of a liquor license from any municipality in Allegheny County to any other municipality in Allegheny County, so long as you, the receiving municipality, issues a resolution permitting that transfer. The standard to be applied is the receiving municipality must approve the transfer unless it finds that doing so would adversely affect the health, welfare, peace, and morals of the community. Some monumental changes were made to the PA Liquor Code last year by way of Act 39, which went into effect last August. Perhaps the, first and foremost, the legislature restated the purpose of the liquor code. This restatement of the purpose is significant, because it's a recognition of the change in the world of alcohol sales since 1934, which when our liquor code was originally written. It is the purpose of this act to reform the system by which alcohol is dispensed and controlled within this commonwealth, to reflect the changes in the marketplace while continuing to protect the welfare, health, peace, and morals of the citizens, and to provide for the operation of a retail system that promotes competition and convenience. The first change, and the only change that really applies to what we're talking about tonight, has to do with what was known as the liquid fuels prohibition. Prior to Act 39, the liquor code prohibited the sale of alcohol at a location, place, or property where gas was sold. Now, the PLCB interpreted this to mean that so long as you didn't pay for gas or store gas on the licensed premises, they would approve a liquor license. And they actually approved the first Sheets liquor license back in 2004 under this interpretation of the law. The Beer Distributors Association, known as the malt beverage distributors association, didn't like the PLCB's interpretation. So we spent the better part of six years litigating with the malt beverage distributors association as to the meaning of the words, location, place, and property. The case actually went to the State Supreme Court. While it was pending at the State Supreme Court, legislature wisely enacted Act 39 and changed the, the language of the liquid fuels prohibition to reflect the PLCB's prior interpretation of the law. So as the law stands today, the PLCB will approve a liquor license to a location, place, or property where gas is sold, so long as they don't store gas on the licensed premises and you can't pay for gas on the licensed premises. That's why, if you haven't noticed, you're seeing a lot more convenience stores applying for and getting liquor licenses. The vast majority of them are coattailing on all the work we did with Sheets for five In order for you to make a decision on my request, let me give you just a little bit of background on Sheets. Sheets was founded in 1952 with a single store in Altoona. Since that time, Sheets has grown to over 600 stores in six states. 256 of these stores sell beer, including 30 of them here in Pennsylvania. Sheets has 28 applications awaiting approval by the PLCB as of today. We filed two this morning, so we're up to 28 waiting for approval. As you know, Sheets built a new store in Monroeville on William Penn Highway at the intersection of Elliott Drive. The store has a sit-down seating area for 30, and as part of its plans for this store, Sheets would like to sell beer to go, and to a much lesser extent, beer for on-premise First, this Sheets store qualifies for a restaurant liquor license under the liquor code. The liquor code requires that you have a total of 400 square feet, seating for 30, and food for 30 to qualify for a liquor license. Clearly, this store does, does comply with the liquor code in that respect. Sheets, all the beer sold will be located in a walk-in cooler, what's known as the soda cave now will become a beer cave, and not displayed on the shelves or on the floor. Sheets will carry approximately 150 different varieties of beer, including all the national brands and many of the popular craft beers in six packs or 12 packs. All beer must be paid for at the cash register designated in the licensed area. All beer for on-premise consumption will be limited to the restaurant seating area, there will be no outdoor beer consumption permitted. Although the store is open 24/7, beer sales are limited to 7:00 AM until the beer cooler is locked at 1:45 AM Monday through Saturdays. Sunday beer sales will start at 9:00 AM until 1:45 Monday morning. Sheets has a comprehensive responsible alcohol management program in place. First, all Sheets employees will receive the Bureau of Liquor Control Enforcement-created Ramp Training Program, that stands for Responsible Alcohol Management, that teaches people how to recognize fake IDs, recognize visibly intoxicated persons, watch for passoffs from people who are 21 to people who are under 21. Second, all restaurant employees will receive TIPS training. TIPS training stands for Training for Intervention Procedures. It's a nationally recognized responsible alcohol management program that was recently recognized by the PLCB as an alternative training program to ramp. Third, Sheets has a 100% carding policy, and they use a card scanner to, for every purchase. As a matter of fact, the SKU, the cash register won't take an SKU unless a valid ID is scanned through the scanner. Another unique thing that Sheets does is that, in the event two people would approach the cashier with beer together, both people will be carded, and if one person is not 21, a sale won't be made, and they actually make a record of that attempted sale, and they, they mark it on their video cameras in the store. Sheets has a two-beer limit for on-premise consumption with the purchase of food. Because on-premise consumption is so rare, Sheets employees log all sales for on-premise consumption. Sheets would prefer not to sell for on-premise consumption, but this goes back to the first Sheets store in 2004. The Supreme Court ruled against us and said, well, if you're going to have a liquor license, you can't just sell beer to go, you have to sell it for on-premise consumption. Seems like we've been to Supreme Court a number of times with Sheets. Good for our business, though. In addition to employee training, Sheets has security cameras that cover every inch of the store with the obvious exception of the restrooms. That includes a camera that's inside the beer cooler, one focused on the beer cooler door, there are also cameras that cover all the registers. These cameras are monitored in Altoona by Sheets's Security Operations Center. It's an interesting concept. Each employee at the Sheets store and all the cash registers have incident buttons, and the employees have lanterns that have incident buttons. Should there be an incident and one of those buttons are pushed, the person, one of the people in the Security Operations Center brings that camera immediately up on the screen and can talk to the person in the store and say, what's the, what's the problem? How can we help you? Do you need police intervention? need police intervention?" Uh, those types of things. Uh, so there's an immediate reaction to any type of incident in all 600 stores. As a matter of fact, the SOC checks in with every store, all 600 stores, in the morning and in the evening at some point in time. They, they go on camera, they look at the store, talk to the people in the store, saying, "Do you have any issues that we need to know about? Uh, you know, if not, we'll check with, back with you in the evening." Uh, the SOC system stores video images for up to seven years, and Sheets routinely provides local police departments with video in the event of any criminal activity in and around the Sheetz stores. Uh, this isn't a place where people come to hang out and drink. Uh, there's no video games, pool tables, jukeboxes. It's a well-lit, safe, and secure place where customers can purchase prepared food and a six-pack of beer to take home. Uh, when you walk into a Sheetz store that sells beer, it looks remarkably like a Sheetz store that doesn't sell beer. The only distinguishing features are, instead of a soda cave, there's a beer cave, and when you go to the cash registers, one of the cash registers will have a little sign that says "Beer Sales Only." Uh, I don't know if any of you have been to the new Murrayville store that just opened a couple of weeks ago. Uh, I, I would suggest you walk into it. You don't see beer anywhere. Uh, you have to go to, you see a sign that says "Beer Cave", and that's the only place beer is. It's not stacked up all over the place. There are some competitors that, that have taken that, that, that kind of route. Um, Sheets views the sale of beer as a compliment to their food service and as a convenience to their customers. They're really all about food sales. Uh, gasoline is, is the bait that's thrown out there to bring people in. Uh, you rarely see a person just pull up and get gasoline. Most people pull up, get gas, walk into the store, and come out with something, and that's the whole idea of a Sheetz store. Um, and for these reasons, we would ask that you pass a resolution at your next, at next meeting permitting the transfer of the liquor license, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and there's a hand up right there.
You didn't say anything about wine, although you're telling us in this, that you gave us...
Lisa, we're not able to hear you. Can you get a little closer to your microphone, please?
That is the first time in my life...
Thank you.
But thank you. You didn't say anything about wine, although we're showing wine racks, we're showing, you know, no sales of wine after certain hours.
That, that's correct. That was one of the changes in, in Act 39, that all restaurant licensees and all hotel licensees can apply and are typically given what's called a wine expanded permit. Um, I think the Giant Eagle down the road has one. Um, and, yeah, I haven't been to that store. I don't know if somebody knows that to be true.
They do.
Yeah, they do.
A few shelves, a few aisles.
So, uh, Sheets does apply for wine expanded permits. They, they typically, in their stores, and you saw the photos, they have a small wine rack.
But we're not doing that...
Yeah.
With this permit?
They will, well, it's a restaurant liquor license which permits them to apply for a wine expanded permit.
Later, at a later date.
Yes.
Okay, so we're not doing that now. You didn't talk about the camera being on the wine.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
For clarification, thank you.
Yeah, so the license, we're just on a license to be transferred to Sheets.
Right.
Sheets may, probably, more than likely, will apply for...
For a wine, a wine expanded permit, correct.
That'll be between the...
The PLCB, right.
The PLCB.
Correct. This is a full restaurant liquor license. This liquor license permits the sale of beer for on-premise consumption and to go. It permits the sale of wine by the glass and alcohol by the glass. Sheets has no intentions of ever selling wine by the glass or beer by the glass. They, they will, in all likelihood, get a wine expanded permit which permits the sale of unopened bottles of wine, uh, to go.
No spirits?
No spirits, no.
No drinking of wine on the premises either?
No.
Okay.
No. No, you, you buy an unopened bottle, and you have to take it, take it off-premise, right.
Any other questions, counsel?
Yeah, I just had one question.
Sure, Mr. Little.
Does Sheets have any statistics in how much on a percentage basis it increases traffic when they have, like, for instance, the Murrayville store, which now sells...
They, you know, because they don't advertise beer, you know, you don't see beer, you know, signs out, out in front of that Murrayville store saying, you know, "Beer here, get your six-packs here." They don't advertise it, they don't push it. Uh, they've, what they've found is, they really haven't had much of an increase of traffic because what they've found is typically it's purchased by people who are already their customers. And, and they know that by people using their Sheets, you know, their little Sheets, uh, get stuff for free card. I guess is the best way to say it.
Rewards.
Yeah, rewards card. Thank you, that was the word I was grappling for.
Counsel, any other questions?
Yeah, your, your firm is handling, you said 28 different?
Uh, currently, there, there are 30 Sheetz stores that are licensed and selling beer and wine. Uh, there are 28 light, applications now currently pending before the PLCB.
Your firm handles all those?
Yes.
You're, you're the liquor license.
Yeah, I, I forgot to plug my firm. Jeez, I'm gonna get fired. Our store practices liquor licensing and liquor law, and, uh, we, we represent almost all the major grocery store chains, Giant Eagle, Giant, Wegmans, Whole Foods. Uh, we've done the liquor licenses for the grocery stores starting about 12 years ago. Uh, with Sheets, we started getting them licensed in 2004 and have been litigating it since 2004.
Just one more quick question. The Sheetz down on 48, if that was ever going to, you'd have to get another liquor license and renovate the whole store like you did the Murrayville?
Correct.
Right, so it wouldn't follow through so that everyone's aware? It's just for the one location?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
One liquor license per location.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing item. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to ask a question or give a comment? If so, please come forward. Let the record show that nobody came forward. Counsel, you can close the public hearing.
Counsel, I'm gonna seek a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Second. I'm in.
Thank you, sir. So, we'll see you on Tuesday.
See you on Tuesday.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Moving over to ordinances, uh, Mr. Ratcher.
It's an ordinance regulating geophysical slash seismic testing activities, and this has been previously discussed as we're all aware.
Does counsel have any additions or questions or comments regarding the ordinance?
I think we discussed this...
We discussed this at length for the, you know, at last month's two meetings, and it'll be on our agenda for action on Tuesday. And once again, there will be another opportunity for residents to speak on Tuesday's meeting. The public comment time is already closed for this evening. Moving over to reports of municipal staff, uh, Mr. Ratcher.
No report, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
And, Mr. Little.
Yeah, I have, uh, three, uh, three items, and then one item I want to mention to counsel. Uh, number one, the 2018 budget will be presented at the October 10th council meeting, um, just to give the public a heads-up on that. Uh, number two is a vacancy board chair, chairperson. Uh, Councilman Wilson asked me to bring this up with counsel. Uh, our Home Rule Charter does not address what the vacancy board chairperson position. Uh, to explain to the public and counsel, I've already given them, um, documents on this. If there is a vacancy on council, on an elected body, there would be six remaining if only one person. I mean, there could be two people that would resign or through death or moving, uh, several reasons why you would have a vacancy. If the current council, in this case, could not agree on a replacement or replacements, you would have a personal elector, which is a resident of, of the community, uh, that would be appointed by this council. This is a volunteer-appointed, non-employee position, and they would take, uh, the chairperson's position as the vacancy board, and the remaining members of council would be the vacancy board. And from those seven members, uh, they would agree, hopefully, on who would be filling the vacancy. Uh, if they can't agree within 15 days, then it goes to the court of common pleas, and then they would decide. Uh, as I said, our Home Rule Charter does not address this, but the borough code does, so every borough, uh, and every municipality for that matter, should have a vacancy board chairperson. And I've mentioned to counsel that if, if they do decide to move ahead with this, my recommendation would be to advertise the position and then move on from there. Any questions, comments from counsel?
Go ahead.
Any direction or anything about it?
I think I'm gonna move forward.
Okay, um, okay, item number three is a, uh, the Trail, um, Trail Grind opening off of Saunders Station Road. That is gonna be on September the 30th, which I believe is a Saturday, at 10:00 AM, beginning in Murrayville at the Roberts Trail Access. My understanding from Paul Estock is that they're gonna have a, um, some type of a, um, festivity at the, uh, head of the, um, up in Murrayville, and then the, uh, the people from the Westmoreland County Park and Recreation Department will come down about 10 o'clock, and there'll be a ribbon cutting for the trail that will open up on September the 30th. So, I'd encourage all the public and council members to attend that. I believe, again, I believe that's a Saturday. Uh, also, the one, the thing that's not listed here, we did get, um, uh, notice from the Allegheny County Economic Development that we received the $40,000, $45,000 for the Act of Allegheny grant that we applied for a little over two months ago that I mentioned to counsel about doing a study. Wilkins Township is already doing this. They're one of the communities we're doing a joint comprehensive plan with, uh, to study the roads in Monroeville with respect to biking, uh, and, uh, different multimodal types of transportation. So, we did get that grant, and we'll be moving forward with utilizing that grant according to its provisions. And the last thing that I want to mention is my condolences to the Byrne Herb family on the passing of a former council member, Mr. Byrne Herb. Condolences to, to his family. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Hugus, any comments this evening?
Yes, sir.
And we'll move on to our council members, Mrs. Gatos, please.
Um, I also would like to extend condolences to the Herb family. I'm sure that was very shocking, um, at such a young age. It's terrible when you see someone of such a young age's life taken away. So, to his family, I, my heart certainly goes out to them. Uh, due to the holiday weekend, the Senior Center Bingo did not happen last Saturday, so it will be this coming Saturday, um, and there will be a $500 guaranteed jackpot. Um, and also, the next one will be October 7th, just in case. There's no meeting, I wouldn't be able to tell you and remind you, so that's their Bingos. Um, and another event they're having, which is a perfect event for the beginning of the fall season, it is their pierogi fest. It will be Wednesday, September 20th at 12 o'clock. Uh, the cost is $6 a person. The deadline to buy your tickets is Wednesday, September 14th. This will include pierogis, haluski, kebabsi, apple pie, and live polka music and dancing. So, this is less than the cost of a fast-food luncheon, so I certainly would tell everyone that possibly can go to give it a try. Um, their events are fantastic. They're very well-attended, so my suggestion is if you wanna go, get, go get your ticket as soon as you possibly can. Um, and with that, that's all I have for this evening. Oh, besides the fact, I'm sorry, if I can't, don't get out to see anyone, I broke my foot, so I'm in a walking boot. Um, so, you always have my email, my cellphone. Please feel free to call me if I need to come and see you. I will do my best to get there, um, but I'm always reachable through cellphones and emails. And, uh, like I say, unfortunately, I'm in a walking boot with a broken foot. So, yay for me.
How about the Twitter? Are you on the Twitter?
No, I don't, I don't twit.
Okay.
Tweet. I don't tweet.
Tweet.
See, I don't even know how to say it.
Mr. Harvey, please.
I don't know how many of you have noticed, but I think the contractors did a great job paving 48. They have taken them a while, but, but the end product is, uh, is very nice. What I was wondering, is there a way to get them to pick up all their orange and yellow, orange and white striped barricades that are falling all over the road?
That's the last part of it. They won't leave them there.
Okay, 'cause they're, they're literally falling out in the traveled portion of the roadway, and you see them smashed on the road and...
At this point, there's, they, they did not serve a purpose, right? They're done with them, there's nothing else to be done.
They just, they were there for the paving, and I'm sure they'll...
Are they done painting?
No, they gotta paint the arrows and stop bars yet.
Yeah.
Can I ask one quick, quick question in regard to what he's talking about, is the signage? Is there anything we can do about the signage of the turning of the hospital lane so people quit going in that lane to take off 90 miles an hour and cut over in front of everybody?
I don't think that'll ever change.
Well, I know, but...
Until you change the intersection.
The hospital sign is in the middle of the two lanes before you hit the main light of gateway. If they put it to the left, maybe that would help people realize that's the lane they need to be in.
We've moved that sign, that, there's been so many iterations of signage at that intersection, and can't really fix everything.
They know, they know. They just do it to cut time.
But people that come in from out of town don't know, and a lot of times, they're in both lanes, and they realize they have to get over, whereas if we either had it written on the road or the sign, the H put further to the left may help.
Maybe we can use one of those extra orange cones.
We'll look into it.
I so appreciate it. I'm so sorry, Mr. Harvey, that I interrupted.
I only have one other thing. Um, please remember this Monday is 9/11. Saying "never forget" kinda sticks with us. Just as a reminder, um, lower the flags to half-mast, and I'm just gonna run down this quick 'cause I think everybody did forget. At 8:47, the first plane hit the North Tower. At 9:03, the plane hit the South Tower. 9:37, the plane hit the Pentagon. 9:59, the South Tower collapsed. 10:03, Flight 93 crashed in Pennsylvania, and at 10:28, the North Tower collapsed. So, in one hour and 41 minutes, that all happened. Please don't forget it and the people that lost their lives during that. Monday, uh, most people will observe it at 8:46 when this hall starts.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Mr. Johns?
I know you'll find it hard to believe, but I have nothing.
Whoa. Are you sure?
I'm positive.
Okay. Mr. Clary?
I wasn't ready. Um, two quick things, one, uh, about the library, I think Nicole forgot to mention. If you are interested in picking up a "Love Your Library" sign, they have about 30 of them, and they're free. And they also have "Love Your Library" pins. They're free, too, if you wanted to pick one up. And then I had one question, and because the roadwork made me think about it again. Between UPMC East and the, uh, that hotel right there on the right, I always forget the name.
Hampton.
Hampton. You, is there any lighting we can put there? A light? When it's raining, and because there's a lot of merging going on, you really can't, it's hard to see the lines in the road. I thought...
No signs?
That's no signs. Like, orange cones? But I know that's, that's a state route. Is there, but it's dark. I mean, it's very lit at the intersection, and then it lights up again, really, when you get down at the intersection of, like, Monroeville and 48.
Both signalized intersections have lights in them, so it's probably that dark area in between.
Yeah. If we could just take a look at that, I'd appreciate it. And with that, I'm done.
Very good. Councilman Duncan?
Yeah, also, my comment, uh, for the Bernard Herb family, I had the opportunity to, to serve on council for four years with him. He was a good guy, and he tried hard for the municipality. And also, um, just to keep our prayers for the people in the path of Hurricane Irma and our thoughts and prayers. That's all I have.
Mr. Wilson?
No, thank you.
Okay. I'll finish up with, uh, just an announcement about a recreation program we've been talking about, Pittsburgh Flag Football. It is a five-to-15-year-old co-ed, eight-week program, Sundays only. It's only a couple hours on Sundays. That's five-to-15-year-olds, September 10th through October 22nd. So, it begins this Sunday, but registration is still open for anyone that's interested. Uh, you can find more information through PGHflagfootball.com. So, but if you Google Pittsburgh Flag Football, um, it'll take you there. You can also find it through the Monroeville Recreation Brochure, but it's a great program trying to bring to Monroeville.
Nick, there's another...
And, if I could finish. And, uh, once again, I would like to just echo some of my colleagues up here in condolences to the Herb family, to Laura, Max, and Sophia. Uh, I, even before serving on council with, uh, Mr. Herb, um, I knew him several years beforehand, so I had the pleasure of knowing him then, but, uh, it was a, definitely a sudden loss, and my condolences and prayers are out to the, his family. And with that, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Second.
Thank you, and good night. Thank you, and good night.
You're.